Okay, good evening. 6:30. I'm going to call to order meeting number 1903 of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are here live in the John Daly Room of the East Windsor Town Hall as well as on the Zoom platform. We're going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a quorum. We have three regular members present here. We have a fourth regular member online and we have one alternate member present here. So Wayne, I will ask you to sit in on any voting that may take place this evening?
Certainly.
Thank you. Do we have any added agenda items?
We do not.
Okay. There was a legal notice. The East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda. They'll be made available on the town's website. PZ 2025-19, the applicant is NRT Realty LLC. The owners are the estate of Joseph Latta Jr., Deborah A. Morel, and Adam Vaughn is requesting a special use permit site plan review in accordance with Section 817-4 of the East Windsor zoning regulations for a mixed-use multifamily and commercial development located at the following addresses: 113, 125, 127, 131, 133, Bridge Street, Map 111, Block 12, Lots 4, 8, 9, 10, and 11. And the zone is PCD. A full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage or the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. This was published in the Journal Inquirer on August 29th, 2025, and again on September 5th, 2025. This is the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on a topic that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, here we go. We'll move on. Approval of minutes. Minutes of our last meeting held on August 26th, 2025. Does anyone have any edits or corrections?
You know. Mike?
Yes.
This is Anne. I'd ask you to look at line 334 where it says NDDH, and again, and 344 where it says NDDH. I think that should be NCHD for North Central Health District. The other typo I'd ask you to look at is line 334 and line 339. And they've spelled leach like, I'll call it the bug, and leach is L-E-A-C-H.
What lines were these?
334 and 339.
339.
Is there anything else, Anne?
That's all the corrections that I thought were necessary.
Okay. If no one else has any other edits or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the Tuesday, August 26th meeting, meeting 1902, with the typographical corrections in line 334, 339, and 344 as discussed.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second right, Jim. Any further discussion? Here we go. Now I'll call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. The receipt of applications, we have one to receive. PZ 2025-21, the applicant owner is the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission is requesting a text amendment to the East Windsor zoning regulations, Section 602, sign regulations. This application will be heard at a future meeting. We have no performance bonds, actions, permit, road extension acceptance. We have no continued public hearings. So under new public hearing, we have PZ 2025-19. The applicant is NRT Realty LLC. The owner is the estate of John Latta Jr., Deborah A. Morel, and Adam Vaughn is requesting a special use permit site plan review in accordance with Section 817-4 of the East Windsor regulations for a mixed-use multifamily and commercial development located at the following addresses: 113, 125, 127, 131, 133, Bridge Street, Map 111, Block 12, Lots 4, 8, 9, and 11. And the zone is a planned commercial development. Who's here to speak on behalf of this application?
Good evening. Jay Ursery with JR Russo and Associates here representing the applicant, NRT Realty. And Bob Trigg, Bob is here with us tonight. Also here is my partner Dana Steele, who is the engineer on the project, and he's going to be talking to you in a little bit about drainage, engrading, and sewer and water and so forth. We also have some folks from BL Companies who was involved in this project with the architecture for the building. Kristen Robbins is the architect. I believe she's online. Also Dominic Sultruda is the landscape architect, who is also online, is going to talk to you a little bit about that. And Scott Hesketh, who is our traffic engineer, is also here this evening, is going to talk to you a little bit about traffic. And I know Scott doesn't want to hear this, but we thought we'd let him go last. So all of his information was fresh in your mind because we're thinking there may be some questions with regard to traffic. So Scott was hoping he was going to get home early at a show he wanted to watch, but probably not going to happen. So at any rate, I'm not going to say too much, which I know is a little unusual for me when I'm here, but Dana's probably going to do most of the talking. But anyway, this is an application for a mixed-use development under your new planned commercial development district zone, which I think maybe we're the first to use. The PCD was adopted, I think, in 2022. And I don't think you've had an application yet. This may be the first one. You approved a general plan of development a few months ago with regard to the application, which is a mixed-use development consisting of some multifamily units to the rear of this parcel and some commercial or restaurant retail use in the front. The parcel is known as River Point. The address for this, I believe, is going to be 127 Bridge Street, although currently there's five parcels, as you saw in your legal notice, owned by the estate of Joseph Latta, Adam Vaughn, and Deborah Morel are the property owners. So I just want to back up just a little bit and tell you that there were some wetlands on this property. We did submit an application to the Inland Wetlands Agency here in East Windsor. We had a public hearing with them a few weeks ago, and they did approve the application and issued a permit for a small amount of disturbance that was associated with a outlet to a detention basin and some drainage work actually in Spring Street. So this parcel, it's about 35 acres, give or take, in size. Most of the frontage is on Bridge Street, which is where our drive entrance is going to be more or less across the street from the boys' home. We also have frontage at the end of Maple Street, a small amount of frontage, about 50 feet. And we have frontage in a couple of locations on Spring Street to the south, to the rear, which where there will be an emergency access for the fire department, emergency services, that'll be gated, and an access for maintenance of our detention basin that's located on the southwest corner of the property. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Dana Steele, who's going to talk to you a little bit about the drainage on the project and the grading and the sewer and so forth. So, you know, why don't you come on up and you can go through that with the folks and I'll get out of the way.
Thank you. For the record, Dana Steele, professional engineer, JR Russo and Associates, and we are presenting to you tonight this plan for site plan review and special use permits in your planned commercial development district. We were here back in March. It's obtained a zone change and approval of a master plan for this development, and now we are coming to you with the detailed site plan for your approval. This development includes its mixed use, meaning it has retina residential component and a commercial component. The residential consists of multi-story apartment buildings, four stories, three efficiency units, two 21-bedroom, 32-bedroom units for a total of 53 units per building. There are six buildings. So that's a total of 318 units. The amenities in this development include clubhouse, a Village Green area, a mail building. Mail building is near the front. So as you come in from the entrance, we have a boulevard entrance here. As you come in, the commercial on your left, the mail building on your right with a pull-off area for deliveries to drop off mail, and then parking surrounding each of the building units. The Village Green area and the clubhouse in the central portion includes an outdoor pool and a roundabout area in the front to provide a convenience circulation and movement around the site. The site was originally laid out by our teams, our partners in the team, BL Companies. BL is our landscape architect and the architect for this project. Then they handed it to us and we worked on the specifics of the site grading, storm drainage utilities, and so forth. So so I'm here to talk about those items in detail, and then we'll allow Dominic to talk about the landscaping and Kristen to talk about the details of the building. But just basically mentioning some of these features. So the mailroom and also in the back here, a trash and recycling facility, indoor facilities, so that'll be contained in the back of the site. The we have a walking trail in the back. It doesn't show up real well on this plan, but off of our emergency access drive to Spring Street, there's a walking trail. It's a loop trail, so you can walk around the trail and back out. The buildings, Kristen will talk about this a little bit, but they do have bike storage rooms. So there are features for bicycles. And we had discussed with staff adding a bike rack at the clubhouse and the commercial site. So we're agreeable to that. The the site is going to be equipped with the ability to install EV charging for vehicles. Per statute required to provide 10% of our parking. We have 534 parking spaces, so we need 53 EV spaces, which we've designated on the plan. Our intention is to provide the infrastructure to those, but not to install the chargers at this time. So they'll be set and ready to go for chargers when that is deemed economically viable. When if there's, basically, if there's enough demand for it, if people want to pay for it, then we'll be able to install them. So it's the intent is to have it set up so that they can be installed as that as we move forward. And that's what the statute requires, that we provide the infrastructure, designate spaces where they can be. There was a discussion with staff about the location. Where should the EV spaces be located? We've located them in what would consider the most remote portions of the site. And you say, well, why would you want to do that? Once you want to make them convenient and easier to get to. Well, our concern is, for one, ripping them together is more efficient for, you know, from a cost standpoint. But also by keeping them remote from the buildings, they won't be occupied by people who don't have EV that just want to park in a space that's right next to the building. So we think that that'll be better for management of these, to maintain them for their intended purpose. So that's what we've proposed. So we have spaces here on the south side. By the way, north arrows, north is pointing down on this plan. So as I described, northeast, southwest. Just keep in mind, north is down, south is up. East is to the left and west is to the right. So the, we have to the south of the Village Green, there's a bank of them. To the west of the Village Green, across from the boulevard driveway, there's a bank, and then also in this interior large parking area are other spaces. And we included one EV space at the clubhouse that'll be handicap accessible. Jay mentioned we have an emergency access to the site. One of the first things we did is met with your fire department and and discussed what their requirements were going to be for access. They wanted a secondary access, which makes sense. So we're proposing this access out to Spring Street. They also wanted us to modify our plans to include an accessway around these rear buildings. So the C and D have a gravel access drive around them. We received today, yesterday, a report from the fire marshal indicating that he was satisfied with our plans. The pedestrian access to the site. When we came in back in March, we had a master plan which showed a pedestrian access down to Maple Street, which makes sense to provide that traffic to access that part in the library and that area of Warehouse Point. However, after we thought about it some more, got into the details of the design, what we realized is this walkway to here wasn't ideal. It's pretty steep. So the grade was like 10% slope, which isn't ideal. It's workable, but it's not ideal. It's also kind of remote, so it's not a lot of visibility for it. So we're concerned about safety. And we talked about wanting to get pedestrians out to where the businesses are on Bridge Street, encourage and encourage pedestrian traffic that way. And so we decided to install a pedestrian crossing on Bridge, because there's no sidewalks on our side of Bridge Street, but there are sidewalks on the opposite side, the north side. So we have a crosswalk that we're going to install with DOT permission right at our access drive, just to the west of the access drive. And that'll provide pedestrian access to and from the Warehouse Point downtown area. So we think that's the best way to go. If someone wants to access the other parts, there is still the emergency access drive, which you can walk down and go down Spring Street. So there's still a way to do that. And we had discussed with staff providing a pedestrian route around the access gate. So if you're walking, you don't have to like step under the gate. You can go around it easily. So but it will keep vehicles from using it, but will allow pedestrians. I don't know how many would would want to go that way, but it will be something that if people want to do, they're going to do. So we've planned to accommodate that. I think also sending pedestrian traffic out to Bridge Street has the benefit of getting people to walk past the other businesses that are on Bridge Street. That's really, I think, going to be beneficial to them and to the businesses in this area. So sending them down a residential street and encourage funneling them to a residential street is, seems less like a preferred approach. So we made that decision. Staff did question it because it was a change from the master plan. So we're open to discussion, open to hear your feedback on that, but we think this is the right way to approach pedestrian access. We are also providing a left turn lane into the site. Scott's going to get into that in his traffic presentation, but right now it's a two-lane road, and so if you want to turn left and you have to wait because there's traffic coming the other way, it'll, traffic would start to back up. So by widening Bridge Street and providing two lanes there, one for turning left and one for bypassing, the flow of traffic can continue. So we think that's what DOT is going to require, and so we've proposed it so that we won't have trouble obtaining their approval for this, which we will see after this local approval. The sightline at this location, Scott will also talk about that, but we are doing some improvements along Bridge Street to improve sightline, to provide the required sightline for this intersection. Regarding your bulk requirements in the planned commercial development, there's minimal specific requirements, but there's a few. Maximum height is four stories, which is what our residential buildings are. Maximum foot height is 48 feet. Our buildings are less than 48 feet. Building coverage allows 50% of the site to be covered by buildings. Obviously, we're nowhere near that. We're only at 8.6%. Impervious coverage, 65% is allowed, but we have only 28%, 28.8% impervious coverage. Mentioned parking for the site. We have 534 spaces in the residential portion of the site. Included in that 534 are 63 garage spaces. We think that this is a premium feature that will be attractive to tenants that want a garage space. These spaces are located in the interior of the main parking area, and there's another bay of them, a single bay on the east side next to Building A. So this is some what, this was the layout that's essentially BL envisioned when they came up with the original master plan for this, with some garage spaces. So 63 garage spaces include, and five of those are handicap accessible garages, so really accommodated the disabled with those features. We do have a total of 20 accessible parking spaces where the regulation only requires 11. But the way it worked out, we didn't want to have just one per building. So we ended up having two per building, and that put us significantly over the requirement. But that way, there'll be plenty of accessible parking spaces. The our parking count then works out to 1.7 spaces per unit. I think Jay mentioned to me when you first came in, we talked about 1.75. So we're a little bit lower than that at 1.7. But looking at your regulations for multifamily, it's only one per single, per one bedroom and efficiency and one and a half per two bedrooms. So we're over that requirement. So we have we think enough parking for this use. We don't want to have excessive amounts of parking. We had more parking initially. We took some out because we just felt that it was excessive. Part of our mandate in these types of developments is to minimize impervious areas. Don't put in more pavement than you need to. And we feel that it's really not necessary. And so that's the the plan that you have before you. Regarding the commercial space, I'll, to be honest, initially when we submit our application, our expectation was we were only asking you for approval of the residential portion. However, staff brought up a good point that this is a mixed-use development, and so if we're only building residential in phase one, then it's really not mixed use. Now, obviously, during construction, everything can't be built at the same time. There has to be some phasing of things. And so in discussions with staff, what they suggested was that one of these buildings be tied to the completion of the construction of the commercial building. So we're going to and thinking through our phasing plan, I discussed this in a response letter I sent to staff. We're thinking that we'll start with constructing the boulevard entrance up to the roundabout. Start construction on the clubhouse and the mailroom and building F. I know we got the building something A through F, and now we're going backwards, F through A, but we could change the letters if it's just to avoid that confusion. We're starting with F, and and then as that one gets completed, the clubhouse and the mailroom will also be completed. We think maybe the, while construction's going on here, we don't want to have the trash and recycling all the way in the back, so people have to walk through construction. So we'll probably need to have a temporary trash enclosure area. So we'll have to provide you with a detail for that and a location where that will be. But a temporary trash enclosure area, probably here in this area for the first building, and maybe it'll have to be moved as the project moves around. But we're thinking that so when people move into this first building here, they'll have a clubhouse and they'll have the mailroom. So they'll have the features that are necessary to fully operate, and and then the project will continue counterclockwise, we envision. Obviously, the final phasing plan is subject to staff review at the time of our pre-construction meeting. So we'll meet with staff, and if there needs to be any tweaking to that phasing plan based on the contractor's insights and preferences and how to approach, we can readdress that. But that's our best recommendation on how we think the construction sequence should go. And so so it will begin with residential, but by the time people are ready to move into this last building, this building will be up. So and one of the reasons we didn't initially propose this is that there's still the possibility, depending on what tenant spaces I'm up here, that this could change. And if it does, we'll have to come back to you. And so that's why originally we're focused on the residential, but but what we are proposing here, what our master plan showed and what we're showing, is a restaurant with drive-through on the north end. So the drive-through has a drive-through lane along the east side and the north side with the pickup window here in the northwest corner, and then the rest retail space. So looking at the at the, your parking regulations for the commercial spaces, we need 77 parking spaces. We have 71 parking spaces within this commercial portion here, plus the drive-through stacking, another 11 spaces. That's a total of 82 spaces. So we think we meet the parking requirements for for the commercial space. Not to mention the fact that the residential probably has some cushion for additional spaces too. So we think that this parking plan makes sense and provides the number of spaces that are appropriate for these uses. All right, so talk to you about drainage. So this site has a ridge that goes down roughly the center of the site from north to south. The water to the east of it drains to this back field here. The water to the west of it drains down to a ditch that runs perpendicular to Bridge Street. You might be familiar with the term the Blue Ditch. According to topographic US mapping, the Blue Ditch actually begins to the south here at Holcombe Terrace. There's a pond behind Holcombe Terrace, and that's the headwaters of the Blue Ditch, and that drains out to the Connecticut River. But this ditch is connected to that one, so it's a tributary of the Blue Ditch. It's hydraulically connected to the Blue Ditch. And so it takes water from Bridge Street, the state's drainage takes water from north of Bridge Street, and it's a significant watershed that drains to this area. And it's a it's a significant watershed that drains to this area. And our our goal here is to make sure that the water from our site that drains to here is less than what it is now. So so we we accomplish that by providing stormwater basins. These stormwater basins are going to look like ponds because they're designed to hold to hold water. The 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 concept is that by holding enough water in in the basin, as as the dirty water, and say dirty water means any any runoff from a parking lot is considered dirty in the sense that it needs to be treated. It needs to go through a treatment process before it reaches a wetland or or a water course. So as not to cause adverse impacts to those resources. So the 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 ponds, when when the the dirty water goes in, it pushes the clean water out. And so by the time it it reaches the outlet, it's had it's had time to renovate. It does that through the uptake of of the vegetation that's in the pond. It it actually absorbs some of those those particles through settling as the the suspended solids particulate matter have sit in the pond. It gravity, they they drop down. They can't if they they need some time to do that. And so having a a large enough pond provides that that treatment. When we were here back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight for for a home improvement store at at this site, we were applying under the old stormwater regulations, which have since been updated. One of the things they changed is they now want us to look not only at total suspended solids, but also phosphorus and nitrogen as additional pollutants to to treat. And so the 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 method, these ponds that we call wet ponds that we're proposing, provide the treatment that is required to meet to meet those standards. So from from that perspective, from a water quality standard standpoint, this development, although it's similar in size to to the previous development that that you approved, it's it has less impervious area and it's got even better treatment and since more storage volume in in these ponds. So we made them larger to accommodate that additional treatment. So so it's a complies with the Connecticut stormwater, the the newest Connecticut stormwater regulations. And so the the site is really divided into three watersheds. We have we have the the front portion of the site that drains out to Bridge Street. That's that's the farm buildings and the residential buildings that are in the front, that those are going to be be removed. That currently drains to Bridge Street. We're going to be redirecting that to 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 here. However, all that water went down Bridge Street, went into the ditch and went to the same place a- anyway. However, even even with the fact that we're taking some of this water and sending it here directly, we still have have a decrease because our we've made our pond large enough that what happens is the water goes in at at a certain rate. And but the water can't go out as fast as it goes in because we put a restriction on it. And that backs the water up. It fills up in the pond. It's called detention. And so as we detain that water, it slows down the discharge of water, even to the point where our peak discharge from the from from this pond is for for the smallest storm that that we analyze, the two year storm. That's basically a storm that 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 has about a fifty percent chance of occurring in a given year. So every other year is kind of a storm is that is thinking about fifty fifty percent chance of a two year storm happening. We have a fifty percent reduction in the amount of peak discharge from from the the site for that. And for the for the larger storms, we have an even even greater discharge, up to seventy five percent decrease in peak discharge. So so we understand that there are drainage concerns a- a- along this ditch. We understand that it's that it's it has its issues. So our mandate is to not make it any worse and if possible, make it better. We think we've done that. We've provided a a solution that reduces the the peak flow rate to those those areas. In in addition, we are providing infiltration for the roof runoff. So some of this site is is wetlands and it doesn't drain well. But some of the site up higher is sandy materials that does infiltrate. So we're going to be utilizing those sandier soils for roof infiltration. What that's going to do is it's going to even further reduce the volume and peak runoff of water that's going to to the basin and provide even more benefits. So the our our analysis, though, to be conservative, didn't didn't include the the roof infiltration. So that's just a bonus on top of our 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 conservative design is that we're also providing roof infiltration. And so we'll we'll be doing test bits to confirm where those locations ought to be when we get to the time of construction. Your your regulations under the PCD require us to implement low impact development tech techniques. Maybe you heard of LID before? The 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 concept of 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 LID is a broad term, but it it has to do with basically trying to match and mimic what it's like without the development so that the water has the same characteristics and flow patterns and and so forth as as before the the development. So some of the things that we're doing that is consistent with LID is to preserve natural areas. Well, we have a lot of a lot of wetlands on the site. They're all being preserved. All the 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 areas along the 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 residence to the the ditch are are being preserved. And so we're taking area that's currently farmland and we're going to be seeding it. So vegetation grows and in that in that way, it's going to also reduce runoff and improve a a treatment of 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 runoff. And so so this this approach is consistent with the the LID standards. Also, we're providing infiltration. So infiltration is one of the the methods. So we're so we're putting the infiltration close to where the sources are. In this case, the the roofs, we're putting we're not we're not piping everything to one big infiltration. We're providing separate ones for each building and and in in some cases, two two separate units for for each building. So we think that's going to provide an important benefit for this. Regarding drainage, of course, we would expect you to look to your town engineer for his input on our on our drainage design. He did submit a a memo with seven comments in it. I've met with with Lynn. We've gone over the comments, agreed how they can be addressed. I form I formalized those in a response letter which I which I sent to him. And so I I believe that all those can be addressed. So I'll just go through them briefly because you probably have read the memo and maybe it raised some questions in your mind. One concerning range was about this emergency access drive out to Spring Street. Right now, the the town comes up and plows street and they and they pile snow right in that area where we're putting our 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 driveway. And so we 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 looked at the possibility of moving the driveway further down the hill to the to to the west. But topographically, it doesn't work. The road is dropping steeply. And so after reviewing with a town engineer decree, this is the best location. So what do we do about it? How do we fix the problem? And what we suggested is we have a gate here. Let's move it back even further. We're providing an easement on the property so that the town can push snow onto our property. We're going to we're going to widen that so to make it even wider. So there's more room for stockpiling snow and and moving the gate back further so that there's more just just more more room for the town to push that snow. And and so that was agreeable to to the town engineer. And oh, and and the other thing was that we recognize that it is just as at your house when when the town comes by and plows snow and puts a mound of snow in front of your driveway, it's your responsibility to clear it. Well, it's their responsibility to clear this as well. So they're going to need to keep it, keep it cleared and and maintained. And and so they'll have to move move that away. Staff also mentioned snow stockpiling in the site in general. We know that's always a concern with developments and we neglected to show specific areas where where those snow stockpiles would be. But essentially, in in these sites, these these areas around the perimeter where there's green spaces, the most logical places to stockpile snow. And and as as the it's it's difficult to stockpile much snow in the islands because we have landscaping. We don't and that was staff's concern too. We don't want to damage the landscaping. So so oftentimes, what's what needs to happen and here in New England, when you get too much snow is it is it has to be trucked offsite. And so we will we will designate some 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 areas where snow can be stockpiled. And 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 in many cases, that will be sufficient. But if necessary, we commit to to removing it. So that the the main concern is that it maintain traffic flows and we maintain sufficient parking spaces. We don't want those piles taking up spaces and having people with nowhere to park. So there was we we discussed preparing an operation and maintenance plan. And we're agreeable to that. We will provide you with a will be a written document like this, spelling out all of the maintenance requirements. And we think that would be appropriate for staff to review and approve. But if you would like to see it, then and that's your problem. So we're going to uh work on getting that to staff so that they can review it. We'll we'll work out the details of what what should be included. But snow removal will be one of the items in that operation. Regarding utilities for the site, the site is split. We have the rear buildings draining to the sewer in Spring Street and the front buildings and the commercial space draining to the the sewer in Bridge Street. And this was per the recommendation of the Water Pollution Control Authority. They said we don't want all of it going out to Bridge Street. We'd like you to split it up. And so we've we've done that. I met with Kevin Parrots from WPCA and he was happy with the with the distribution that we were proposed. The town engineer also, I forgot to mention, the town engineer also mentioned something about relocating some catch basins. You might have seen that. I just wanted to explain, I did meet with him and explain that we really can't do that. I would have if I could have, but that this this garage building is in the way of of getting getting the catch basins that he was talking about are in this large parking area here. The the four four catch basins here, sending them here would have to go around this building and the grades don't don't work for that. And we can't lower the site to be able to accommodate more depth because our outlet here is right at a wetland. So we can't we can't go any lower than than it is currently. And and I reviewed that with Lenny and he he agreed after looking at it closer that that we've we've done we've done the layout the correct way. The also mentioned about this basin here being not having enough clearance between the the largest storm and the top of the berm. And after talking with Lenny, we're we're going to just going to raise the berm up six inches and that will address his concern. So he also asked me about back to back storms. You saw that in his report, which is a little unusual because I've never designed for 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 back to back storms. But I did a little research anyway to 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 look to look into this modeling, what 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 happens in back to back storms. And and what I what I found is that the the way these storms are are modeled, there's a there's a long buildup to the peak of the storm. It's a twenty, it's called a twenty four hour storm. And and it doesn't peak till about the thirteenth hour. And so what what happens if I if I start with this pond, let's say a hundred year storm comes through here, right? And and the and the pond is is at its its maximum full. And and then another hundred year storm starts right after that. That was a scenario that he was kind of envisioning. With that thirteen hour drop to it, by but by the time it reaches there, this the the pond has drained down and it and it's the the difference is negligible. So it was surprising to me that that would be the case, but it it works even in back to back storms. So but that was interesting. But I'm a drainage engineer, so those things are interesting. The the electrical, I mean, the service, they're expecting electric HVAC. So we don't have a gas service or oil. They're thinking, you know, these nowadays, everyone's going with these heat pumps and the, you know, fish, they're very energy efficient. And so that's what they are envisioning for the site. And water service will will come from Bridge Street. And and so we'll work with Connecticut Water to provide the required infrastructure for that. We do have three hydrants throughout the site. The fire marshal was told us where he wanted them and we put him where he wanted them to be. And he's given us a memo saying he's he's happy with with those with 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 the plan. I've already talked about the phasing. I think that covers it for my presentation. Sorry if I was a little long, but I think at this time, Dominic, are you are you online? Unless you have any questions for me first, before Don Dominic Johnson? Any questions about drainage or?
I think we'll let you finish your presentation and then we'll do our questioning here.
Dominic, do you want to talk about the landscape plan?
Sure, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me? I just want to make sure everyone can hear me first.
Very well.
Perfect, thank you. Dominic Saltre, BL Companies, three fifty five Research Parkway, Meriden, Connecticut. I'm a landscape architect at BL Companies. Walk you through the landscape plan. Probably start down near the entrance. I'm going to walk you around the site, so you got to get get an idea of the of the entire site. Before I start that, whoops. I got a pop up. I apologize, technology is not my friend tonight. In designing the the overall landscape plan for the site, we do meet or exceed the zoning requirements that are laid out and set forth. They are noticed on or observed on the plan. But we'll go ahead.
Turn your screen.
Okay, I can do that. Yeah, hold on one second. I want to get it bigger first. Bear with me. Share a screen. Just trying to figure out which screen I'm sharing. Hold on a second. Can everybody see the screen? Just let me know if the if the screen is is on there or not. You seeing a screen or no?
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your your help with the technology, everybody. Okay, so getting back to the site and we'll start down in the in the lower lower corner over here. Let me see if I can get some technology to work for me. Lower portion of the scene, obviously, there's an entrance sequence where a boulevard to enter into the site. There's there's a central island that runs that spine all the way up to the roundabout in the center of the site near the clubhouse and building F. Along that area, we've mixed in appropriate level street and flowering trees as well as evergreens and some deciduous plantings in the in the in the median itself. When you arrive up to that area of the roundabout, we obviously have a a bissection for pedestrian access and it should be said that there is pedestrian access running up from the street all the way through the site. And there's a generous amount of of sidewalk system throughout the site that you can see in the the beige color area all over the site. Once you progress through that, that that boulevard spine goes and dumps you down near the down to and into the area where the where the two bigger garage structures are. There's parking lots both adjacent to the clubhouse on on your right hand side of your screen and the left hand side of your screen. Where building A exists. We went with some some smaller stock trees in those areas. And then obviously, everything that's planted in the in the the bed areas of those zones. Are you hearing me okay? Okay, in the bed areas of those zones, either ground covers that are resilient for for both summer and winter and obviously fall and and spring accents. As you progress into the lot areas to the north of the site, excuse me, tree plantings and island plantings do the same effect in those zones. And then what we try to do is create behind the clubhouse the open space of the park green area. We did get a comment from staff on those trees and we're we're going to go ahead and make that recommendation. We're going to expand those trees to a bigger, more shade shaded area tree that will help both with the effect for the pedestrian and and overall community aspect, but also ties in for some more cooling for the the hardscapes that are surrounding that village green area. I'm going to hook back around for a second, make my way down towards the 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 from the residential into the commercial zone. As you can see, there's numerous plantings in that area for the for the basically island effects and also end of island effects for for trees. But and then also around and then near the loading zones, we've provided some buffer plantings to the left hand side or the eastern side. We've observed the buffers all the way around the sites. I'm going to walk you through those buffers where we've either inters- Um, we've observed the buffers all the way around the sites. We're gonna walk you through those buffers where we've either interspersed if we're, or budding up against, we're an area where we've got lighting or, or the commercial aspects where we've done some evergreen buffers. We've tried to spot these areas along the uh, left-hand side of your screen with some deciduous trees. Uh, we've been very cognizant of the whole site. If you guys are familiar with it, it is a giant fielded area currently. So there's the vegetation, we were, tried to retain as much of the existing vegetation, especially on the peripheral as we can, as we keep that. And then we infill uh, where we can with, with uh, new proposed vegetation. As you get over to the backside of the site, you're gonna see some different colors on your screen. Um, around the buildings themselves, obviously we'll have lawn areas that can be open areas and then, and um, maintained uh, both for aesthetics and also for use. Um, the darker colored green zones are the, the basins uh, that the engineer had discussed. Uh, that can be aligned with it, with a different type of uh, of, of, of vegetation material that's both um, conservation. It's a kind of a conservation slash wet-footed material that can thrive in those zones. And then the, the colorful off-reds or lighter green colors of the, are, are the dedicated wetland areas where there'll be a conservation mix. In that mix, um, there's numerous other facets in that mix, but we can, we can touch on some of them. Sorry, I gotta pop up again. Touch on some of them real quick here, uh, just to get an idea or a flavor of what's going on out there. So that conservation mix will consist of some rye, some blue stems, some fescue, um, different uh, different, different, different types of fescues, switch grasses. Then we average in the milkweed, black-eyed susan, golden rods and asters to get um, a primary uh, primary grow-in like he talked about in terms of both aesthetic look, but also to maintain um, soil erosion control in those areas as those areas grow to uh, build up. If you look near the access road to the rear of the site that we, that he had discussed with the gate, uh, we're proposing that conservation mix on both sides of that access road. And when you come around to the right-hand side, we're taking advantage of the existing tree canopy near the residential zones. Followed by uh, that, that uh, linear basin, uh, that'll have that, that uh, basin seed mix in it. And then we're gonna convert that area over there into that conservation seed mix. Uh, further over from that um, slivered basin, runs north to south or up and down on, on the sheet. You've got a robust uh, buffer of existing vegetation from the, the residential units that are on that side of the property. Coming back down, we have some access points where we have to regrade to create that basin. That'll be a conservation mix in there. We did have a slight nod to some uh, overstory, um, that's right, understory and mid-story uh, deciduous trees planting in there to augment off-site buffering uh, from the residential zone. And then as we work our way back around to the front, uh, again, we're taking advantage from the residential properties of existing vegetation on site. But then we've also armored it with a little bit of buffer uh, evergreens uh, down near the mail drop-off uh, as we get down near the entrance uh, to the site. Overall, um, talking a little bit about the proposed vegetation. Uh, we tried to mix in uh, natives and native adjacent tree species. Uh, you'll be seeing maples and service berries, the locusts and zelkovas. This tupulos mixed in, uh, some of the evergreen trees that we're selecting are, are hollies and red cedars. Um, then augmenting with arborvitae in areas where we need screening uh, of a more structured uh, value. In terms of shrubs, uh, that'll be utilized on site, we tried to have a good mix, a lot of the, a lot of, of durable evergreens and some deciduous. So there's some dogwoods, hydrangeas, hollies. Uh, we've got some fragrant sumac in there. We, we've also augmented with some spireas as well. And then some of the ornamental grasses, we peppered in some of the miscanthus, miscanthus grasses. Uh, we wanted the ground covers to be both uh, aesthetically pleasing and durable off of the different uh, northeastern uh, conditions. So we went with creeping juniper. We've got uh, lily turf, a big blue lily turf uh, in certain zones and then obviously some catment. And then for a little color punch, we've interspersed daylilies throughout the site. That's the long and short of the, of the site. I know we'll have some questions. I know there was some questions for us in terms of some comments that we get back. And I think the team will probably be, be fine with me answering or, or adjusting some of the questions. Um, in the village green area, uh, we, we are gonna augment with some shade trees in there. So we got a, a good mix of ornamental and shade trees, uh, then we're probably gonna add some benches to that zone as well. Um, shade tree plantings over in the dog park, thoroughly agree. We're gonna try to add two or three trees over in that area. So we give the, our four-legged friends and, and their, and their, and their handlers or their keepers uh, some shade and also some uh, aesthetic view through that area. Um, clarifying notes on foundation plantings, uh, the foundation plantings will be added and we can bring those back. Uh, but as, as such happens, sometimes the buildings shift or, or ebb and flow a little bit. So we want to make sure that we anchor the buildings first and then we can come back with foundation plantings per unit. Uh, maintenance plan, uh, uh, the engineer talked about that one. Uh, and we talked about snow storage, so that hits most of the comments that we had seen uh, to date. With that, am I turning it back over to the engineer or am I turning it over to Kristen Robbins?
Uh, Kristen, uh, I'll go through the architects.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Kristen Robbins with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway, Meriden, Connecticut. I'm a licensed architect in Connecticut. And Dom, I'm going to steal the screen from you.
I'll go ahead.
All right, uh, just to confirm, everyone can see my screen?
We can.
Great, thank you. Okay, so uh, starting with the residential buildings, um, as mentioned, they're uh, just under sixty-two thousand square feet total for each building with fifty-three residential units. Um, there's a combination of two-bedroom units, one-bedroom and a studio unit. So the two bedrooms are the blue, um, one-bedrooms are the purples and then we have the studio unit in a pink. Um, within each building, there's the utility space, tenant storage. On the ground level, we have a bike storage with access uh, directly outside. Um, each unit will have operable windows and access to balconies. Um, I know that was one of the questions that we responded to. And then there's tenant storage on um, other floors to accommodate any additional needs that they have. Uh, so each of those buildings would be the same. For materials of those buildings, uh, we went with a little bit more of like a coastal beachy feel with um, you know, gray tones, uh, whitewashed siding. So it's a um, cement board siding, combination of a clavard, um, like lap siding look. And in a darker gray with trim dividing it, kind of breaking up the scale uh, between the heights of where that trim is. Um, and then punched window openings, as I said, with access for residents from both their bedrooms um, and the door access from the living rooms. Also on the site, there are several uh, other buildings. We have that commercial uh, mixed-use building that's at the front of the site, um, which will have a restaurant component and a retail component. We've anchored that main entrance for the um, residential and then the retail uh, which can be subdivided or, you know, might change with the entrances, but we have a combination of uh, masonry, uh, split face on the front. Um, add a little texture to that and then tying into the residential buildings, reusing that hardy siding or cement board siding. Uh, both the gray and the white. And again, continuing, we have um, peaked roofs with architectural asphalt shingles and a cupola that's used throughout that campus to maintain kind of a residential feel mixed with the commercial. Um, we have the clubhouse, that's the center of all the residential buildings. Um, again, repeating the similar finishes. Uh, within that clubhouse, there would be a um, kind of lounge area, um, game type thing with a kitchen uh, to potentially host events. There would be a, you know, flex work area uh, allowing for um, meetings or individual like telephone rooms, uh, fitness area, a leasing office and then restrooms that would support both the fitness area and clubhouse as well as the uh, pool that's adjacent to this building. There are also the smaller auxiliary buildings around the site. So we have the mail building, uh, when you enter the site, taking and using the uh, architectural shingle um, in the gray. Uh, you know, still keeping some of those elements with the column wraps and the uh, pitched roof, but slightly smaller in scale. Um, there's the garage building, which is this bottom one that repeats the cupola. Um, and then the trash building, which is tucked in the back corner. So we've kept that a little more um, nondescript, not using the column elements, but still pulling with the same finishes uh, from the rest of the buildings. So I think I've addressed all those buildings uh, and the questions that came up in the staff comments.
So. I'll just add one thing. I think Kristen mentioned the, when talking about the commercial building, that it had a residential component. I think you meant of the restaurant, right?
Uh, what I was saying is having a residential feel, like tying into the residential complex so that it doesn't look completely different from the rest of the buildings.
All right, and I guess I'm, I'm here to wrap things up. For the record, my name is Scott Hesketh. I'm a licensed engineer, state of Connecticut, firm of F.A. Hesketh and Associates. The author of the August eighth, twenty-twenty-five traffic report, which was revised and updated uh, September ninth, twenty-twenty-five to add the uh, retail portions of this uh, of the development. As you heard previously, we had expected to just get site plan approval tonight for the residential portion. Um, due to staff comment, they asked us to include the retail portions as well. So the September ninth report updates and revises and updates the uh, information to include that. We were asked to take a look at the traffic impacts of this proposed development on the local roadway network. In order to do that, our office researched the files of the Connecticut Department of Transportation. The DOT had traffic volume counts out on Route one forty, which they conducted back in February of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the counts um, on Bridge Street east of North Main Street indicated an average daily traffic volume of about nine thousand vehicles. A morning peak hour volume of five hundred vehicles and an afternoon peak hour volume of seven hundred and thirty-six vehicles. Our office arranges for the conduct of manual attorney movement counts at a number of uh, intersections throughout the corridor. We conducted counts at the intersection of Bridge Street and Route one fifty-nine in Windsor Locks, Bridge Street and Main Street. Uh, Bridge Street at the I ninety-five, I mean, I, I ninety-one northbound ramps and the I ninety-one uh, southbound ramps. We also had counts previously at um, Route one forty and um, and South Water Street as well. We used that, those counts were conducted during January of twenty-twenty-five. We reviewed the Connecticut Department of Transportation counts to determine that traffic volumes in the area basically have remained steady or declined slightly over recent years. However, to be con- uh, conservative, we used a one percent per year growth rate to grow the traffic volumes to a twenty-twenty-seven design year in anticipation of the completion of this uh, development. In terms of the site-generated traffic for the proposed development, we reviewed the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report, which is a standard engineering reference. It allows engineers and planners to estimate the traffic volumes at a proposed use based on actual field counts conducted at existing and operating facilities throughout the country. The proposed development here is to consist of three hundred and eighteen apartment units, a twenty-five hundred square foot um, restaurant. We call it a coffee donut shop with a drive-through window and about eight thousand six hundred square feet of uh, additional retail development. Uh, the ITE projects the traffic volumes for those uses based on the number of units in terms of apartments, the square footage in terms of retail and um, uh, restaurants. And it also projects the traffic for the restaurants based on the uh, peak hour volume of the adjacent street traffic. Using the ITE numbers, we're projecting that this site will generate a total of three hundred and seventy-six trips during the morning peak hour, hundred and fifty-eight entering and two hundred and eighteen exiting movements. And three hundred and twenty-nine trips during the afternoon peak hour, made up of a hundred and thirty-six entering and ninety-five exiting movements. Uh, a portion of this development is retail. We've assumed a fifty percent pass-by rate for the retail uses because uh, the traffic going to and from those developments is likely already on the roadway uh, and headed to or from other destinations. And we'll just simply make use of the development of the, of that development as they pass by. This is uh, most likely true in terms of the uh, of the, of the restaurant portion of the development. We distributed the site-generated traffic to the local roadway network. We used three different distribution percentages. For the residential development, we had thirty percent to and from the west along Bridge Street and seventy percent to or from the east, making use of the interstate highway system uh, to get to and from work. For the retail portion of the development, during the morning peak hour because uh, of the restaurant and uh, we assume it's a coffee shop, we had seventy percent of the traffic entering and exiting via a right-hand turn. So seventy percent entering from the west and exiting to the east, mostly because it's a convenience-type use and you'll do so if it's convenient to you and you're doing it on your way to or from work. And it's most likely more convenient to make a right turn in and a right turn out. If you have to make a left-hand turn, you gotta wait for opposing traffic. You gotta make a left-hand turn coming out. Takes you a long time, not so convenient to you. You'll probably choose another, another user. And uh, the third distribution that we used was for the retail traffic during the afternoon peak hours. We used a fifty-fifty distribution of the traffic for those developments. Again, we assumed a fifty percent pass-by rate for the, for the retail uses. So after distributing the traffic uh, to the local roadway network, adding it to the background traffic volumes, we made a projection of the combined traffic volumes on the local roadway network upon completion of the proposed development. We then conducted capacity analysis calculations using the uh, highway capacity manual and the SyncGrow software program. We looked at the background conditions and we looked at the combined traffic volume conditions to determine if there's any impact on the intersections of, related to the site-generated traffic. And we looked at again, the intersections, um, all the signalized intersections on Route one forty from the northbound ramps to the uh, Route one fifty-nine in Windsor Locks. And we also looked at the intersection of the proposed site driveway and Route one forty or Bridge Street. Uh, the analysis results indicate that all of the intersections uh, in the background conditions operate at levels of service C or better during peak hours with the number of them operating at A or B. Uh, with the exception of the intersection of uh, Bridge Street with the, the Dexter driveway and the Montgomery Mill driveway. That intersection there operates at a good level of service in the morning at C, but in the afternoon, the calculations indicate a level of service F, meaning it's very difficult to get through uh, that location. I know that intersection's been recently under construction. Um, they're probably trying to figure out what their new signal timings at that location are gonna be. But they did remove one of the approaches at that location, so hopefully there'll be an improvement. We reviewed some alternate timings for that location and under the combined traffic volume conditions, we can improve the levels of service, at least to an overall level of service E, which is an average delay of about sixty-three seconds per vehicle, which would be an improvement over the existing conditions of about eighty-eight seconds or the combined traffic conditions of about a hundred and twenty-two seconds of delay at that location. Uh, all the other intersections operate at acceptable levels of service and the increase in traffic from this development uh, will not exacerbate that situation. In terms of the proposed uh, site driveway, as, as Dana had indicated, we're looking at a, well, the plan shows two site driveways to Route one forty. One of them is a full-access driveway. We're proposing two exiting lanes, one for right turns and one for left turns. And we're proposing to widen, to widen Route one forty or Bridge Street to provide an exclusive westbound left-turn lane into the site. Uh, with those improvements in place, the site driveway, uh, the Route one forty approaches should operate with level of service A, meaning virtually no delay for those approaches. And the site driveway approach, the right turn movements would operate at a level service B, delays of about 15 seconds on average per vehicle. And left turns would operate at a level service C in the morning, at a level service D during the afternoon, with delays of about 19 seconds or 33 seconds on average. We don't believe it's necessary to provide a traffic signal at the location because of the levels of service are, are more than acceptable. As Dana had indicated, we reviewed the intersection site distances at the proposed site driveway location based on the posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour. We require 390 feet of site distance looking to the west, 415 feet of site distance looking to the east. With a little bit of regrading in the shoulder, we can provide those intersection site distances. So the intersection should operate safely and efficiently. Because this proposed development provides in excess of 100 residential units or 100,000 square feet of floor area, we are required to go to the Office of the State Traffic Administration as a major traffic generator. We have made the step one application to OSA currently, which, which is now reviewing and approving the traffic volumes. We did ask them to put it on hold because we had to adjust the traffic volumes now for the, for the retail portion of the development. So we'll be resubmitting that information to them in the next couple of days. So OSA and the Department of Transportation will be reviewing this driveway intersection location because it, Bridge Street is Connecticut Route 140 and a state highway. Now, in our analysis and calculations, we assumed that all of the traffic from this development would be using the, the single driveway. As shown on the plans, there is a second driveway, a right-in, right-out driveway located behind the, the retail portion of the development. That's convenient for deliveries, truck deliveries to and from the retail development. Not so convenient for most of the retail users as the drive-through window exits out to the front and would go to the main driveway. But it could be accessed by residential development or some of the retail shoppers. But mainly it's to accommodate deliveries to and from the retail portion of the development. Now, we do understand that Route 140 is a busy roadway. We know that it's an alternate access point for, for people on I-91 when there's incidents up on 91. And when there were incidences and traffic backs up there, people tend to shift over to, to Route 140. We recognize that, we understand that. Gladly it only occurs maybe once or maybe twice a month. Hopefully not too much more. I know they're currently under construction, so it probably feels a little busier these days with all the paving going on up on, on 91. But we are aware of that, we, we have looked at it. When it gets that busy, there's not a whole lot anyone can do about it. It's a, it's a fact of life and we have to live with it. At least there'll be someplace for them to get a cup of coffee while you're having a difficult time traversing Route 140 in that location. As Dana had indicated previously, we are, there are sidewalks proposed throughout this development. The sidewalks are, come down the site driveway to the intersection of the site driveway and Route 140 because there are no sidewalks on the south side of Bridge Street, but there are sidewalks on the north side. We are proposing a crosswalk at that location. We're going to be proposing a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, RFB, that people can push the button and the lights can flash and let people know that somebody would like to cross. And at least they'll be more aware of it. Most, some people will slow down and stop, some people may just go through, but as long as the lights are flashing, eventually people stop and it gives people a clear chance to, to cross the intersection safely. So we think that that might be a benefit not only to our residents, but to other people who may wish to cross Route 140 in that location. If the commission has any specific questions related to traffic or any other parts of the development, now might be the right time because I think we're done unless we want to follow up with any summary statements.
I think at this time, that completes our presentation. So if anybody has any specific questions, be happy to answer them if we can. If we can't, we'll find an answer, get back.
Anne, I'm going to start with you since you're not in the room.
Okay, um, thank you. It was a good presentation. I do have a few questions. When we had the conceptual plan discussion, you were asked if there were going to be any affordable units. And my understanding and recollection was the answer to that was no. Is that still the case?
For the record, J R Russo, no, there, there will not be any affordable units in this development. This is a market rate development in terms of the, the multifamily. And as I'm sure guessing most everybody in this room realizes that East Windsor does meet the affordable requirement in terms of the 10% that's required here in the state of Connecticut, they exceed that.
That's true today, but with the addition of this many units, it's questionable if we will meet it in the future. My next question is about lead building design and what you thought about for sustainability. And things I heard in your presentation were the bike racks. He didn't say it, but obviously there's the proximity to the train station in Windsor Locks. I heard about the EV chargers, but them being infrastructure capable only without the chargers. And I heard no chargers for the commercial building. I heard nothing on rooftop solar. I didn't really hear much on if the building materials were selected to improve the energy efficiency of the buildings. I did hear that you're planning on heat pumps, so that would be something. I heard a lot about native vegetation, but I'm wondering what else you could tell us about what you're doing toward lead building design.
I can answer a part of it. Kristen Robbins, BL Companies. As you mentioned with the HVAC systems, it is a efficient system with the heat pumps also going all electric. Is the movement now. As far as envelope compliance and insulation, the energy code actually has increased the requirements. So we have higher insulation that would be within the walls. There would be a continuous insulation layer, which is one of the main things to keep heat in the building during your cold seasons and also the continuous air barrier. The materials that were selected for the exterior have some sustainable features, recycled material, but they really are selected more for durability and longevity so that they will hold up and not need as much maintenance and replacement, which I think is a critical thing to sustainability. And then just interior, we haven't selected interior finishes, but that's kind of a rule of thumb for us is to select finishes that have recycled content and are locally manufactured as well as low VOCs.
Okay, thank you. I heard in the conversation about wet detention ponds, and I'm wondering if that means they hold water for long enough for it to become a mosquito problem? Or if they drain adequately so you don't build up mosquitoes? And if there's standing water for a long duration, do you need aeration to manage mosquitoes?
We'll respond to that. So the stormwater ponds are, are, the wet ponds are something that is a fairly new development in stormwater design. It used to be we'd make these basins, put the outlet at the bottom and just let them drain dry between, between storm events. I understand the concern about mosquitoes, but these basins are designed to, to, to hold water, just as the ditch holds water, just as the Connecticut River holds water. There's, there's water bodies all around and, and so mosquitoes are, are something that have to be managed. And, and, but because of the requirements of the, of, of the Connecticut stormwater guidelines, we have to provide these type of, of treatments to, to comply with those standards. So while it is, it is unfortunate a possibility, it is, it is something that is, is a necessary component of stormwater design.
Is there anything you can do to abate the mosquitoes if you get a mosquito breeding ground?
I mean, I've heard of putting in bat houses and things like that. Bats like to eat mosquitoes. So there is, I'm, I'm not sure how, how effective that, that is, but it, I think that's, that's something that, that the development will can, can evaluate as they, as they go forward to try to address concerns if it, if it is a problem. So.
They have companies that come out and spray. They do it for residential.
Yeah, yeah, you can, there are.
Spray around the property.
Um, spraying, spraying options too.
I think if you can keep the water moving, like through aeration, that can prevent mosquitoes too.
Yeah, you could put in, put in aeration in the ponds. I don't know if it's going to keep mosquitoes away, but that is a possibility.
I'll go on to, I only have a couple more questions. We heard from a neighbor who I believe lives in the finger that sticks into your property. And they were concerned about they get, they allege they get flooding that comes off of this parcel and it causes flooding and damage on their property. And then I heard the snow being from the street being piled up at the end of the driveway. And I just want to make sure we are not causing more problems for that particular household. And hopefully it's less with what you're doing to improve the water flow.
I, I think so. Right, right now, this, the agricultural fields runoff onto that, that area and we're going to be putting in vegetation there, so we're going to be reducing runoff. The, the access driveway will be impervious and, and that will, there will be some increase from that that, but the, but the, but the vegetating of the fields offsets that. Plus the, the driveway is not curbed, so the water is sheet flowing off or maintaining sheet flow from this area to maximize infiltration. The, the, the snow stockpiling is something that the town does and is going to continue to do. So we don't think we can really eliminate that. The snow's got to, got to go somewhere. But we're, we are sensitive to the fact that those are, are concerns. And I think once this site is, is stabilized and, and we've reduced the amount of, of farm field runoff, that's going to be improved. Just one other comment, you, you mentioned about EV parking for the commercial site. We, we are proposing eight spaces in the commercial portion as well.
Okay, that's great because I thought all the EV parking was, the way I heard it was far out in the back.
Yep, for, for the residential, we put them in the central portion around, around the Village Green there. But, but in this, in this area here, behind building A, there's eight spaces designated for EV.
Oh, great. And my last question slash comment is I heard in the conversation on the landscaping, nice, I'll say, natural vegetation in, I'll call it the fields and it, some of the surrounding area. And then for closer in, daylilies for a pop of color. And my comment on that is in a lot of parking lots, they put in daylilies. They have a very short bloom time and it would be nice to intersperse another kind of flower with it that blooms at another time so you keep the color going.
I'm sure Dominic can respond to that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not going to be a problem. Actually, if, if they're maintained correctly, the daylily should, should go from about June, end of June through, through this time of year. So you get that color, you know, late spring, early summer throughout the fall.
I've never seen that in a commercial parking lot, but maybe you can.
I agree, I agree. But we can, we can definitely, you know, augment with something different. We can split them down and, and do something a little bit different in those areas. Like you said, we, we try to focus them so they're not spread out everywhere.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I just like my color to come multiple times. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Stacy, I'll start with you down the end.
I have a slew, I have a few questions. Let's start with, why is the first building going to be instead of A?
Because originally we were, when it was laid out by BL, they were thinking of going in this direction. But after further consideration, we said, no, we're going to start this way and go this way. So I can change it so that this is A and it would make more right sense, right? If, if it started with A and, and ended with, with, with that.
Well, I guess where the EVs are located, A makes a little more sense to have the building labeled A, of course. Otherwise your EV is kind of far away from that, you know? Like you don't have any EV parking dedicated near, you're going to build that parking lot over there.
Here and here and here are the, are the EVs. So just, you know, central, central location.
Wrapped around.
It's just wrapped around the, the green space, yeah.
Okay, is, there's going to be a pet policy? For these, is there a policy planned?
Do they have pets in the building?
We imagined so.
I don't know, we made your determination, but.
Proposing a dog park.
Yeah, that's right.
Right? Yeah, just, just us, so there's pet policy. So the dog park, if I'm reading it correctly, is that light green area that's now going to become trash in the future? Or is the trash building?
So the trash is this darker green, I probably shouldn't have been green colors, but it's, it's in this area here. There's a sidewalk around the perimeter of it.
It's pretty small. Okay, it's that end of the line.
Yes.
So will that be part of phase one?
No, no, the, we're saying we're, we're going to have a temporary trash area.
Temporary dog park.
Temporary dog park? Probably not a temporary dog park. Might, that might have to be something that is done later. Kristen, do you want to weigh in on that? The dog park, when can we put the dog park in?
It would likely be after the first four buildings. I think there is at least sufficient green space for people to be able to walk their dogs in the meantime, so that it would just be a leashed policy until the dog park was in place.
It's a good question. I, I don't know that, but it's, it's difficult to accommodate everything as the project is built out and under construction. So a temporary dog park might, might be an option, but, but, but I don't know that we were envisioning that.
Okay. What about EV bike, like electric bike charging? Is there a plan for the electric bikes that are coming about?
I think we, we talked about that, Kristen and that's challenging to do in the bike rooms, right?
Right, so it is something that we were discussing. And if it, I have to admit, we have not laid or finalized the decision, but it would more likely be at the clubhouse. If, you know, we were to provide, it would be an outdoor charging so that we're not charging electric bikes within a building.
Yes, it creates problems with, with charging those, those e-bikes indoors. So an outdoor one near the clubhouse probably would make more sense. If that's something that's, that's required, it's not something we were proposing at this time, but, but.
And then I would recommend be careful if you put outlets inside your bike storage room. Because if there's an outlet, somebody will.
They'll plug into it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. How do you envision these commons areas working? Like the clubhouse with the exercise and the mailroom, you know, mail building? How do people access that? Security codes and hours or like, is there? I just think that mailroom, that mail building. I lived in the Montgomery Mill for a while and we had very visible approach for mail and lockers and all that stuff. And things still went missing with the amount of people walking around and had visuals on it all day long. And an office with people manning that. This confined, or even being in there, insecurity. If you're in the mailroom and it's like lots of boxes and lockers and are you, are you single? Are you safe? Are the kids? Are you single? Are you safe? Is there observation? Is it just video cameras? Like, what's, like, it just seems like a uh, yeah, I'm just curious about that, along with the clubhouse, along with um, kind of the trash, you know, are there are there areas with good observation? So that people aren't isolated and alone? How do you see that working?
I mean, I I think uh, generally, when when you, as a development of this size, um, you've got a lot of eyeballs around kind of to to help keep and keep uh, people honest and keep keep an eye on things.
Well, we're all gonna, gonna have cameras.
I'll just be cameras and and like a key, like key codes and fobs, like.
Typically, there are key card access into those buildings. So that residents are the only ones that have access and they're the ones who are escorting guests into the buildings. We have not designed the mailroom, but it is of sufficient space to do um, parcel lockers. Which doesn't take care of all of the boxes, but does limit um, the number. And then residents are able to have some area, you know, it's similar to like the Amazon lockers. And you can actually have programs with them as well to have Amazon lockers installed. So that is an option. But at least the key card access does, you know, register who's accessed what buildings.
So my daughter lives in a complex kind of like this and they have a a room in the office area where all the Amazon stuff is all dropped off and you go in and show your ID. Then you get your package and you walk out. They bring everything to one room.
Cause the Amazon people aren't all.
Instead of Amazon dropping packages all over the place, because they can't get to the buildings.
Right.
So they drop it in the front door. So usually have one, in that particular complex, they have one central hub, one room where they drop everything off. That's like what they're, this is your job.
Is there like someone manning a rental office situation?
There's a rental.
They're in office.
House, yeah.
Yeah, so they usually, they have like a big storage room for the Amazon stuff.
Lot for certain, uh, just, just food for thought that it just seems like an area where it could get a little blurry what's going on in the mailroom sometimes, the way it's designed. Um, all right, so along those lines, as I'm thinking about this, and you mentioned your your plans to go counterclockwise and hold off onto the commercial aspect, which is really part of the mixed use requirement until the end, saying that changes may come. You're expecting to start renting in F? Like right away, right? As soon as it's done? And then you're not completing the commercial aspect until the very end? That's the proposal right now?
Right.
Okay. Seems a little late, like to be landing mixed use for an indefinite, is there amount of time attached to when this has to be complete by?
I think what you're trying to get is, we've seen phased proposals that final phases didn't happen till five, six years or never happened, the last part of the phases.
Which is really the, where we make our money, the last apartment building, until we do the commercial as well. So the commercial is gonna get done either before then or at least by then, okay? The last building is gonna make, that's where we make our money.
They're going to the right because they have to. They have to that building first. They need the clubhouse to rent out. They need the mailroom to go in, construction aspect.
There be.
They're going to the right on purpose that way.
A commercial aspect included in the clubhouse then, in in my two cents. Could there be an element of mixed use right off the bat?
I tell you, the commercial thing, I've had so many people take a look so far, and I'm a tenant mix guy. Okay, and I've done a lot of shopping centers and these kind of projects, and I want to get the right use in there.
Yeah.
Right? It could change.
Yeah.
You know what's gonna happen when the project gets started, all right? You'll see what, you know, be more people will come out, more more business will come out. I'll I'll be able to, we'll be able to make the right choice.
Yeah, having so many uh, customers living right, right there is gonna be attractive to commercial. But until they see it happening, the incentive isn't, isn't there. When they start seeing people living there, that becomes.
Right, well.
There's been a lot of activity.
Good.
Okay.
Good, so.
Just gotta make the right decision.
What about the vision we've been hearing is, it might be a coffee thing, might be like a morning breakfast thing. If it's not that, are there hours limited of what could be there? Could it be a bar? Could it be something that's open till 2:00 AM? Like, are we, are we concerned about that so close to so many residences?
Wouldn't be a bar.
It wouldn't be a bar. Okay, so it would say it has to be closed by night. Like, are there quiet hours?
Can't tell you about hours right now. It depends on the retailer.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna be a bar.
Okay, and then while I still have a minute here, I feel like this section, should I show you there so that you can see? I feel like this is gonna be sort of, um, I feel like it could be problematic right here. This section right here especially, and I'm sure there's other people that might have other ideas on it. With the flow of in and out and people, if they do build this up, trying to get into the queue here to get out, I do think this is great. I personally wonder if this couldn't drive through here and tie in here so that this doesn't add to this, nor the crosswalk element. Be right with all of the drive-through. I mean, could more parking be here and then you satisfy your spaces without counting the queue?
So you'd have to put the window in the back of the store. So the store is here and this is usually um, like storage. And it's not where you would put, put a a window. Plus, you'd have less queuing then, you know, because you're getting more.
Get more parking. And they get in and out. But additionally, like, I just feel like this is like really creepy. Like, I can just imagine, all right, you're trying to get out, you got kids, you got school, whatever, you got work, and you got this queue coming in and these people are trying to sneak in and these people are trying to get out and these people are trying to. It just seems like a high, a high concentrated spot if this, if and when that comes to be. And then likewise, the the crosswalk that's proposed here, I'm gonna go out there, I lived in Colorado and they did some great things with pedestrian bridges over traffic roads and also bike access for that, because you got, you got this plan for bikes, but then you don't really have a dedicated bike path. And I'm just curious, what would happen if you flowed bikes and pedestrians separate from cars? And is this, what's gonna happen here? Like, if I was a kid, I'd be sneaking out here all the time, you know? And if I had a dog, don't you think my dog would end up in that detention pond? Could we fence that pond? Could we fence all these ponds?
Good.
Just a couple of thoughts.
Hey Wayne?
Yes, uh, your your plans are quite nice. I like them. I do have a few questions about certain things. Uh, number one, there's a spring located on, on the front entrance there, but disappears. What are you gonna?
Spring?
Pardon me?
There's a what on the?
A spring.
Water spring?
A water, yes. It's listed on page two of your papers.
Certainly.
Yeah, uh, for the record, here's for Jay Iber, so in some of the older deeds and older land records, there was mention of spring rights, which goes back, I'm sure, to some of the agricultural uses that were there, present on the property. Uh, they weren't specific. We never found a spring. We don't know what it really referred to or where that.
Okay, so there is no spring.
No, technically, we never found a spring, but I'm sure maybe a hundred years ago, um, as probably a lot of us, I mean, Blue Dish was named with a reason as to its color. It probably wasn't water that you wanted to use on the farm for agricultural purposes. There must have been a spring somewhere that they were using, but.
Yeah, so there is no.
Yeah, we never found one, we never saw one, but it's still mentioned in the land records.
Okay.
We noted it on the survey.
Okay, and um, like Tracy was saying, I I think that there's a problem with this crosswalk. Um, if people are coming in, for example, to use the facilities to to eat, if it's a restaurant or whatever, they're gonna be coming about the same time as people are driving, getting out of work. And it just seems like there's gonna be a confusion problem there. And the lights are, they're nice. It's a nice gesture, but it's not gonna stop people. Um, blinking lights, the caution lights, I get it. Okay, that's, that's one of my concerns. Another concern I have with the traffic is, you can only pile up according to your little display here behind the building. You got seven or eight cars. And that seems like seven, eight cars is gonna take up your space to turn left going west from Route 91. And I have a feeling that with 300 units, we're just guessing. Now, some of them are multi-bedroom units, but we'll just say there's one couple in each one. That's six, 600 cars. Most people drive their own car to work. So 600 cars coming in all around the same time and leaving at the same time? You're gonna have a a traffic problem backed up on 91. I just think that that this traffic is, you know, possibly another entrance exit would be in in uh, the course of thinking. One other thing I noticed is your commercial building here, uh, looks like the people have to drive in with their trucks to pick up the canisters of garbage. They don't look like they're driving spots, but that's just me. I can't see. They're pretty small. Yeah, I know, they're real small there.
Yeah, and here. Yeah, they're they're angled so that the trucks can come in at an angle and and uh, pick them up, you know, fork trucks to to pick up the dumpsters and.
It just didn't look that way. I just wanted to question. The uh, like again, with the traffic, uh, is it possible to have another entrance and exit? Besides that one? I just think if there's a problem in that place, you're gonna have, uh, it's it's like all little ants trying to get out at once. There's gonna be a heck of a jam. Um.
This was the the plan that was proposed with the with the master plan. Um.
I I get it, but you know, I've been down through there.
That we hired Scott to do a study and figure out whether it was gonna be a problem or not. Wanna say something, Scott?
Yeah, in terms of trip generation, I, we've got 318 residential units. It's not gonna be 600 vehicles. Um, the ITE, not only do they do trip.
What can you say there?
Because the ITE does traffic volume counts and parking needs counts at existing developments throughout the country. And what we found is that uh, residential development such as this needs about one parking space per bedroom. At a max.
One in per bedroom.
That's the maximum. Uh, that's, that's, well, that's, that's the parking ratio, which which makes the most sense. And the larger the development gets, the uh, the less, the less you need. Because typically, when people move into a residential development such as this, they're nearly out of college, they're single, they just got their first job. Eventually, they find somebody. They get married, they move in. Couple of years later, they have a child. And once their children start to get ready to go to school, they go out and they find a single family home with multiple bedrooms.
I don't think, I have nothing to back up that, sir, but I do believe that you're gonna have a.
The Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Study and Parking Generation Study are are the backup for that. And we can, happy to provide you that that information. But these are data based on counts conducted at existing facilities throughout the country by by traffic engineers and by and by land planners, because we want to know how to plan for future developments. Now, let's say there were 600 vehicles here. Um, they don't all leave at the same time. Work schedules, some people start at seven, some people start at nine, some people work second shift.
Again, we're just assuming this, but it seems like there's a lot of people gonna be in here with multiple cars.
One, we're not, we're assuming it, we're basing it on historical evidence.
Okay. Another question I have is how far from Route 91 is this entrance into this building? 500 feet, 600 feet?
No more than way farther.
It'll be 850 feet.
800 feet. Okay.
All the capacity analysis calculations, which we've done and which are summarized for you in table three? Yeah, I mean, blind as a bat these days, so I won't put these out. Calculations indicate that we're looking at queues of one to two vehicles during those peak hours on the on the driveway approach, trying to get out, mostly because most of our traffic is making a right-hand turn out of here. And there's very little delay.
Good.
So is it gonna be large backups? There'll be backups on the site driveway on occasion, certainly. There'll be four or five. There might even be six, seven vehicles on occasion. But when there are those number of vehicles, the lights on either side will change, they'll create gaps in the traffic flow. And two or three or four or five of those vehicles will move out in quick succession. So, I mean, the the numbers based on the ITE and the calculations indicate that there should not be a significant issue at the, at the site driveway. And in terms of the internal circulation, we're looking at levels of service of C or D for vehicles exiting the site onto Route 140. So Route 140 has significantly higher volumes in the site driveway itself. So trying to get out of the internal driveways in the site onto the external site driveway should be even significantly easier to do than than to leave the site in and of itself. So I I don't see that we're gonna have a significant congestion problem at the, at the driveway.
It's about 1,500 feet from the the highway to our our driveway.
Okay. Thank you.
My scales off a little bit.
There, a question is, um, visitors parking?
Designated visitor parking, it's just parking. So the parking is uh, 534, 1.7 per, per unit.
That's the best way to do it, to be honest with you. Don't designate parking.
You start designating it, it's harder to.
Parking pass is required kind of thing and.
To designate the parking, then if someone's not there and a guest comes, they've got nowhere to park because all the people that live there are away.
I'm really referring to when it overloads with visitors, not does it get a visitor parking. Christmas time, you know, Thanksgiving or something.
People go away on Christmas too, and then their car's not there. So it's kind of a, kind of balances out.
Are you thinking about if someone rents out the the common space?
Yeah.
And they invite like a birthday party and they have a bunch of people come?
Yep.
And they influx like 20 cars or something that afternoon?
Right. So the crosswalks, visitor parking, and do you have intentions of putting security cameras up and just?
Uh, one thing that came up about the mailroom and.
Mailroom, yeah, but I'm just wondering about.
Screen cameras. Your thoughts on that, Paul?
We can do it.
Just think that.
I like that idea.
And some call boxes.
And um, do you propose to have anything to block the headlights from the people around there, from uh, exiting entrance and the houses around the area across the street, the uh, receiving home?
Receiving home is pretty well set back from the, from 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 Bridge Street. And I think that uh, the landscape architect tried to uh, put in landscaping uh, where where there was proximity to to residential. You wanna, you wanna talk about that, Dominic?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, we tried to obviously head off any areas where headlights are gonna be directly impacted into residential properties. Not just on the, on the, on the, the road or the street frontages, but also adjacent properties that may have that in the future. Uh, and then obviously, we're we're using a combination of evergreen, evergreen trees and also existing vegetation in some areas that's dense.
Hey, are you intending on putting lighting down the exit or the entrance for the emergency?
No.
No.
Trying to be sensitive to the residents on Spring Street and not have lighting back there.
No lighting back there.
That's pretty much my question.
Jim?
Okay, the combinative proposal widening, it'll be necessary to obtain an easement additional right of way from Department of Children and Family Services. You guys don't have an easement yet. For the widening of the road.
We don't have any, we're in discussions.
So that's a big, what if you don't get that easement?
From the state of Connecticut to state highway.
I understand that.
We have to satisfy the uh, any off-site improvement requirements by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. If you can't satisfy those improvements, then we don't have an approved plan.
So that's a big one, right?
Could be, potentially.
Be. So another thing is, um, permission from OSTA. Will OSTA make you guys, if necessary, put a light in there? Or is that probably not gonna happen because there's two lights, one there?
Well, I would say that in order to have a traffic signal, you have to prove that one is warranted and needed. Um.
Proof of you guys, of the applicant to, after, would OSTA say you need to put one here because your trip volumes are?
No, the applicant would have to request it and prove that it's necessary.
You're certainly not gonna do that because that's a bigger expense, obviously.
Well, we don't believe it'll be needed. But I mean, if I suppose OSTA could say, we feel it is, go ahead and put one in. And then we would have to, we would have to address that.
Um, and that's all have the traffic. Um, so EV charter, they don't have to put rough and they don't have to put any.
To be ready to.
Just.
Structure ready to put.
Okay, so they cover that.
Hmm.
Um, Spring Street, which they're not gonna put as an entrance or an exit, which is good, and it's gonna be gated. as an entrance or an exit, which is good, and it's gonna be gated. Just walking, if people want to walk, they can walk, so they're not gonna come up and down the road. It's not gonna be, just emergency vehicles only.
Right.
Engaged.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, so aside, turn. Elevators in the units? Four stories, you have to. Lot of, I heard a lot of stuff about drainage in the Blue Ditch. We didn't, we're gonna need a final sign-off from Lenny on everything. We will not, we're not gonna approve, at least I won't approve everything without a final. Lenny has to give her blessing on all this. I know it's a lot of talk, you talked to Lenny, I heard a lot of conversation, but.
We're confident.
We want to see something, a memo in writing from the town engineer saying that the Blue Ditch is gonna be better than what it was. I get what you're doing with the.
Well, I, I mean, he's got comments. We've known how we can address them. They could be conditioned for approval, but I understand what you're saying. You want something from him saying everything's good.
So we always approve, we always don't approve anything without a memo from Lenny. Well, on that, parking temporary trash, I'm okay with that. Oh, roof leader drains. So you guys don't know where the leader drains are gonna tie down into and discharge? Is that what you? Are they gonna go into the detention ponds or no?
They're going to the catch spaces or to these roof infiltration chambers where where we have soils that are suitable, so some.
You guys weren't sure where you're gonna put them, but you said, I thought.
Yeah, because, because we have to do test holes to determine if it's.
Yeah, okay.
We've indicated where we expect it to be suitable, and we show those on the plan. But we have the ability to move them around if there's a spot that's better and make that adjustment in the field.
Well, that's all I got for now. The mic though, okay.
All right, I kind of want to start off with that second easterly entrance and exit. The primary use of that is for, you said, for deliveries? Okay.
Loading space here on the side of the commercial.
Okay, so looking at that commercial building, I don't know if you didn't, just didn't add enough details, but it looks to me like it's only gonna have front entrance access to the buildings. There's no rear doors, rear access to any of the locations in that commercial building.
Well, there is a, there's a sidewalk here.
As far as pedestrian doors or any place you'd accept deliveries from. So if you're getting a delivery of materials, you'll have to bring it in through the front door.
No, no, there'll be doors in the back, there's a sidewalk in the back behind the building.
Okay, because they're not depicted on the drawing. The, I'm, the original drawings that you submitted first.
Picked it.
Yes. So it looked like it was gonna have a single means of access to the building. And for a delivery truck, where is he gonna park? Because your queue line is of your, of your, you know.
There's a shaded area here that's, that's in this outside lane, so the queuing is separate from the, from the.
He's gonna have to cross over the queue.
Cross the queue, yep.
And carry stuff in that way.
That's what I do at Dunkin' Donuts.
So they'll, they'll have to be hand truck ramps or something there for him to get on, up across that sidewalk.
Gonna be level, so this.
Okay.
Ramps.
And so he's gonna so he's gonna have to drive in, because there's a there actually like a landscape barrier between the that shaded area, so he's gonna park on this side in the shaded area, and you do a tiny, so he's gonna have to walk through the bushes?
Well, he's gonna have to walk around the dumpsters.
Oh, boy.
To the south here, and then cross the, there, and then up, up the sidewalk. He could just cross the landscaping, but, but if you're, like you said, if you're on.
He's gonna walk up and around that. Okay. Did that, where I talked about?
Maybe we could eliminate that island, because the island provides good separation from those those uses, so.
Do you anticipate, I mean, the food may get a tractor trailer for delivery there. Has he got enough? He's not gonna be able to turn around in there, so he's gonna have to drive up and around the building.
Yeah, so, so if they're, if they're coming from here, they'll have to come in the main entrance, come around the building, and then they can go back out. If they're coming from this direction, they can come in the, this, this eastern entrance here and then circle back around.
Do you intend to have any kind of signage at that other entrance? As far as, you know, deliveries only, or, you know, no tractor trailer traffic or anything to that effect? Because.
We wouldn't want to limit the tractor trailer traffic. They're, they're designed to provide for tractor trailers to be able to access them. Multiple curbing so that.
So if somebody did pull into there, there's a sufficient turning radius for them to get out.
He's never gonna make that swing with people, cars are parked.
That's exactly.
That's right in front of the building, too.
Provide you with like a turning movement diagram if that'd help to demonstrate how they'll maneuver through the site.
That would be helpful, yes. I have a question for staff. When he was talking about the commercial parking spaces, they included the eleven queue spaces as part of meeting the requirements. Is, are they, is allowable to count queue spaces as part of parking spaces?
That's how they did it for.
That is how they did it for Aldi's.
So it is, it is acceptable that queuing is considered parking?
For their commercial piece. It was the first time I had seen it with Aldi's.
Actually, just to comment in that for a second, J R Street, J R Russo, I think Scott could probably chime in, and it probably goes back twenty or twenty-five years now, where the D O T actually got involved with Dunkin' Donuts, I believe, at the time. And they did a study to determine how many queuing spaces they need, because they had issues with those stores backing traffic out into town roadways and state highways. And they came up with a number, and I want to say it was fourteen cars, if I remember correctly. And they are typically in a design standard counted as parking spaces, because those customers don't park in a typical space, as we know, and even myself now with grandkids. It's a lot easier to stay in the car and go through the window than it is to find a parking space, get everybody out of the car, go into the store. Everybody wants to go through the drive-through. I saw first too long ago, actually, at a Dunkin' Donuts store, where there was a guy on a motorcycle that had a full helmet and leathers and everything else that went through the drive-through at Dunkin' Donuts and got a coffee and a bag of something, and he drove off. I don't know how he handled it, but he got it and he left.
Okay. Where do you want me to go next? Landscaping, or do you want me to go building next? All right. Let's go, let's go landscaping or site. The detention ponds. Based on the elevations that you show, if these things are going to hold water, you have, I'm, I'm seeing about a seven-foot difference between the bottom of the detention basin and the effluent pipe going out. Or if it'll naturally flow till it gets to the effluent.
The standing, the standing water depth's about four feet. That's the, and then as during a storm event, it'll rise higher. And then it drains back down.
Because if you see, if these things are gonna have water in them at all times for, for a large period of time until, and especially once your suspended solids come down and create a silt layer, it's gonna hold water quite a bit. You're gonna get.
The intent.
You're, so you're gonna get frogs and wildlife, and you got little kids out there, they're gonna be going out there trying to pick up frogs. So if this thing is now anywhere between the, the four and six-foot depth levels, we, we may need to start thinking about, you know, fencing or something to prevent kids from going in there playing in the pond and potential drowning hazards. Because most of them are, you know, infiltrate total, and they're only there wet for a short period of time, but if this is gonna be wet all the time, I would, I would be concerned about kids going in there playing, because they're just, it's natural. They're gonna go after frogs and whatever else they can find. Len talked to you about raising the berm six inches then to prevent overflow?
Well, not to prevent overflow, but just to provide additional bumper cushion just to make, just for, for.
That's gonna add another, is that gonna add another potential six feet of depth to the, six inches, I mean?
Uh, no, it's just, just raising the height of, of.
Okay, so the effluent, the effluent's not gonna be affected. Right? I was just saying, if it, if it did actually overflow, then, you know, what, what's the natural grade? Which way is that water gonna head? Is it gonna head towards the neighbor's property, or is it gonna?
It went onto the ditch.
Onto the ditch.
We, we could have just discharged right to, right to the ditch. Instead, doing the additional expense of bringing it out to Spring Street, replacing the culvert under Spring Street and, and connecting it in there to, to have, have better conveyance and control, so.
Building F becomes the first building. How much of the internal infrastructure are you going to create with that first portion? You're gonna stop the paved driveway at, at the end of F, right at that circle?
Roundabout is what I was, I was thinking, that the roundabout would, would be the end for F. This basin would be constructed and, and this, this parking here. And probably the, the temporary trash somewhere, somewhere in this area.
And then your, your construction vehicles are gonna continue down through there. You're gonna have to
Right.
worry about tracking.
Will you make a temporary road to the left or something, or through the left side during construction? No? I mean, yeah, there's nothing to be there, there's no buildings gonna be there. Yeah, make a road through that way instead of going through your, through your site.
Because most, most constructions are gonna start six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, and that's when you're, probably a good portion of your tenants are gonna be leaving to go to work, and you're gonna be crisscrossing.
Construction access used.
And that, and that way you can block off something at the end of block section F, so the curious people don't continue on up that way to see how the, how the building's coming along.
And if we don't build a commercial yet, then. I know you want the commercial, I'm not.
Yeah. It could be a coffee window.
There's some benefit to, you know, the staging of it that way.
So you're probably not gonna find a cold pave until all the buildings are done? Final call, you're gonna do.
You can just do the binder and not put the wear course on.
Probably, I.
If we have a construction entrance, we might be able to put some final courses down. It depends on how the thing progresses, but that's an excellent point. I don't know if anybody's familiar with the new Trinity complex in Enfield that was just built on Hazard Avenue. It was the old Johnson Center. Dana designed that, and we worked on that for a few years, and that's exactly what we did there. It was a separate construction entrance that actually came in from the rear. You couldn't see, but the place had to stay up and running the whole time it was there. They actually used the existing building. We built the new one right next to it, then tore the old one down, and they actually just finished it now. But the temporary construction entrance worked very well to allow the patients to go in and out and use the facility while it was under construction, and it worked good. So that's a great idea, and I think it could, could work here as well.
Probably this, this along the eastern boundary.
Just when that truck, when your truck's through.
You can put a gate there, secure the construction site.
I don't want you guys coming through Spring Street till it's a temporary.
Yeah, that's where he was headed.
Worked well on the, on the east road or something.
That's why I do, I run the project, but I'm not.
I, my, my final thing is looking at this trash building. So do you intend to be putting in compactors, roll-offs? What, how's, how's the company gonna be picking up this trash?
The ones, J R Street, J R Russo for the record, and maybe Kristen can chime in, but the ones that we're familiar with that we have done in this area, they have a compactor and they have a recycling section. So the trash goes into the, into the compactor, is pulled on whatever this frequency needs to be, depending on the number of residents. And the recycle actually gets recycled just as you do with your home, it's single stream. So your cans and your bottles and whatever goes into the recycle.
I'm, I'm thinking about the company to come pick it up. So you have, you have this one door that looks like it's about nine feet high, not even. Eight foot, is it an eight-foot door that's on the side of the building?
But these are typically smaller access compactors where it's not done. It's done by hand. You know, it's similar to like a residential, that a guy will come and grab the materials from within the building. It's not a.
Not a roll-off, not a thirty-yard roll-off or anything like that.
Correct.
Because that's what I was thinking, they start. They'll, they'll tear off of this thing with a, with a roll-off.
We often have these systems within buildings that are accessed just by a man door. So we've provided a little more flexibility by having the overhead door.
You want to add maybe a, an exhaust vent on the top of the roof of this thing? Because in the summer months, that thing's gonna cook in there?
I, yes, there will be an exhaust vent. They're required for trash rooms.
Okay.
So there's no more scattered dumpsters all over the place? It's just one area?
That people have to bring back. Uh, my final question is from, from building F to building A, what kind of timeframe are you thinking?
Man.
So it may be a while.
No, because the demand is high right now. I could say it isn't, you could say, you know.
Because if, if there's certain things that are being, you know, waited on until the final phases, again, when will the final phase ever come? That's kind of.
Give you some history. Again, J R Street, J R Russo. We had a client who just did three hundred and forty units in Enfield. They were ten-unit buildings, thirty-four buildings, very similar to this with a community building, or a gym and common area and so forth. It took three years to build the whole thing out. It, it's kind of a slow start, maybe you might say, but once it gets going and people recognize that it's there, it didn't take long to fill it up, and I believe they now have a waiting list. If you're familiar, which I know you are, here in East Windsor, the Mansions and Canyon Ridge has a waiting list. The sixty-day notice to leave. You have the preserve, which is in Windsor, about ninety-eight percent leased, and they're going in for a few hundred more units. The demand is on the north side.
Kind of to tie back in the whole commercial side of it.
Yeah.
Exactly. So I mean, I, would it be unreasonable to say that if, if, you know, the commercial, the commercial has to be constructed within three years? To, to that aspect or? Or something, just to guarantee that, you know, all of a sudden we say, demand drops out, we're, we're gonna hold off on that.
Construct it within three years?
That was my final question. Does staff have any questions to the applicant?
I do. Just wanted to clarify what Jim Third had brought up in his memo. So your reply memo went to him yesterday. Right? You answered all his questions. Are you looking for him to answer back?
Something, something, a letter had, like we always. I'm all set with my blah, 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 blah.
Said he was gonna try to get something today, but, you know, he didn't have much time, so.
There was stuff going on in town today. Yeah. So okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't looking for anything more. Okay. I do want to I have a write-in comment, and I know the gentleman who wrote it is online, I believe, still, yep. So I'm gonna wait when you take public comment for that. Uh, we did get comments in from the deputy police chief on the traffic study. And I provided you that. One of the other things he does mention, as a bigger Kristen Stern, and it did come up tonight, was security. And if if he wanted to kind of get brought in, if there were any discussions on the installation of a robust security system. If that's something. Just putting it out there because it's in his, his memo. I had a question on the emergency access road. Gonna be gated. That's going to be, the initial plan had the permeable pavement. Gonna be gated, that's going to be, the initial plan had the permeable pavement, the pavers. Pervial, permeable pavers.
Right.
Um, ten times fast. Now it's asphalt.
Oh, asphalt here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Green browel there.
And um, I just wondered what why that was done, why that change was made.
I think because of the, because of the slope, it's, it's fairly steep coming up from Spring Street here, um, and so, and to have um, that steeper slope with pervious pavement will be, would be less traction, not, not as good for uh, access. The important thing for emergency access is that, that they can, they can get in. Once, once we get up to the higher point here, this part is not, is not as, as critical, it it could be pervious pavers, so we just felt that uh, it was, it was cleaner just to have a consistent pavement surface, it's not patchwork it, you know, with a kind of a mixture of different.
It piques my curiosity, because there was discussion about flooding, Anne had brought up comments about flooding of that adjacent property.
This right here.
Uh, in the past, and just um, didn't know if it would be helpful to go back to that permeable pavement or pavers.
That's, that's, that's my concern is, is that uh, the previous, we could do it, but uh, I think it'd be better for it to be paved.
I had a question about that second exit, you were talking about the trucks and stuff. I was thinking, you know, like, is this the bypass that most residents will take? Once the commercial spot is up, and, you know, initially thought, like, is that a enter-only or exit-only? Because it looks so much smaller than the other one, but now understand. That's all I had for now.
Okay.
Like, yeah.
Anyone else on the commission have any further questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application?
Well, Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. Okay, you're gonna have with four feet of water. That would be typical, right? Okay. Not only would it need to be fenced in for safety, but you're gonna have cat tails, you're gonna have frogs, you're gonna have fish. You're gonna have migratory birds fishing in there, which is not a bad thing, by the way. But those things are gonna take place, and now you've got a major maintenance issue. Because to maintain that, that's gotta be a fence where you have access for somebody to do things. Over time, silitation is gonna build up, and it's gonna have to be addressed. And the only way that can be done is with a maintenance plan. Not just, oh, we'll do it, because oh, we'll do it won't cut it. So I don't want there to be any question, I will tell you that I was involved with the digging of the pond, and first thing we were told is you won't, it'll never have water unless you put in a liner, that was a lie. It filled up within a matter of weeks, and we have everything I described. Fish, frogs, cat tails, blah, 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 blah. Okay, that's what happens, because, but the herons and the eagles and all, when they show up, they bring seeds, eggs, everything, and things grow. So you gotta be aware of that, and that means without a maintenance plan, it will fail in the future, and I know you don't want that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Um, Chris Porter, third, that's Spring Street. Um. Your uh, retention on there, while you were describing it, you said something about Spring Street culvert? Was that, was that correct? What is, what is that plan?
Chairman, if you'd like me to.
Yeah, you may answer the question, yes.
So, um, there's a culvert under, under Spring Street uh, um, in this, in this location here, right near the corner of the property. And um, we're gonna be replacing the culvert, um, and then uh, tying the overflow from this pond in, 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 into it, so it discharges uh, downstream rather than discharging here. So that, so the water goes where, where it's uh, wants to go.
They're continuing along the, in, existing blue ditch line?
Can, continues down the, the ditch to Holcombe Terrace, and then down uh, parts.
Have any further questions?
Trish Sherry, Depot Street, Purple. Um, I don't think I know where that crosswalk is going. Would that be right across Bridge Street?
Yes.
And there's not gonna be any traffic light there?
Currently, there's not one proposed. They were saying that the crosswalk system will have a flashing light. Um, I, I'm, I'm most familiar with like UConn campus, they have those everywhere there. The, when somebody hits it, there's lights that flash.
They work.
They do.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Berkeley, King's Court, Broadbrook. Uh, a question about the blue ditch. Can you show me exactly where it is? Any idea?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, Scott, I'm taking notes, sorry.
So the, the ditch is this uh, this property line here, our, our uh, western, western property line, it coincides with this.
No.
That line, that dark.
Is that this pipe underground, or is it a surface runoff?
Surface ditch. It's not underground.
Yeah.
Thirty years, a lot of people have filled it in, that's what's happened.
Because I, a friend of mine lives right in the middle where you're pointed.
Over here?
Yeah, right in there, and right in his backyard is the ditch it runs through.
Correct.
And doesn't have a lot of water, and it most of the year, it's pretty dry. Just when you get extreme runoff and rains, that's, it starts to flow with, it's filled with water.
It's very flat, so that's part of the, the issue, it doesn't, doesn't flow well because it's, because it's so flat, so the water builds up and then and then by gravity makes its way towards the river.
Do you know how far back that ditch goes across this Bridge Street, doesn't it?
Yes.
And so the dead boy is gonna be on the ground like this.
There's quite a ground.
Because it goes past Geithers and beyond. Yeah. Wouldn't it?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application?
Did you wanna read something directly?
Um. I do, I don't know if Mark Taylor would like to speak, but he did submit a letter earlier today, by way of email. Mark, do you wanna speak to your comments? And you're on mute if you're there.
So we'll take silence as a no.
So you all have the letter?
Yeah.
And he lives uh, on Spring Street, and has questions regarding the blue ditch and ensuring any increase in volume, that the blue ditch receives doesn't end up being a flooding issue.
For the town engineer, every bit.
And that, I just think that, that.
Saved, and it will be put online with the rest of the related documents. Okay. Okay, um. So at this point, the list that I've created so far of, of what you will get us, back to us with is the location of a temporary trash enclosure, uh, locations of snow stockpiles, uh, turning radius diagrams. If you do decide to go with a construction entrance, location and layout of that. And then the operations and maintenance plan. Any other things that people?
Time for it to have a commercial use.
Which we discussed, it's three years, and, and so we would put that into the terms and conditions as well. Were, there anything that I missed that you, uh? No, well, okay.
Mike, um, could we make sure we have gotten formal acknowledgement that the neighbor who had the flooding problem from this property is getting relief? And no increased water flow?
I don't believe that they're showing an increased water flow, so how?
I'd just like to make sure from Lenny's perspective and the town's perspective that they're, they've looked at that.
We'll, we'll request the town engineer to take a good look at their flow calculations.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so with that, um, I would like to continue the public hearing. So like a motion to continue the public hearing till our next meeting, which is the twenty-third?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing till our next meeting, which is September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, at six-thirty PM.
We have a motion to continue the meeting till our next meeting, do we have a second?
A second, Matt.
Second by Wayne, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Public hearing is continued.
And you can help each other. Yeah, eventually.
You're welcome.
Even you, thanks, even you.
Okay, so our next item, we have no old business, no new business, no other business. We have correspondence from Frog. A flyer on Let's Talk House.
Yeah, so if you have the desire to attend, there's two options, Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, and Thursday, October sixteenth. One is uh, probably that's the one, October sixteenth, unless you'd like to go to Southington. Um. Yeah. So I, you know, could be educational and help uh, if you haven't already completed it, that's a patient help.
Um, we have nothing for business meeting. No need for an executive session. Does anyone have anything else I'd like to discuss with the group? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So we have that a motion?
We have a motion and a second, call for vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, the meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-four.